I'd like to call this work session of Ashland Town Council in order. Those of you who, like I do, follow the news probably have noticed that there's been a disturbing number of shootings of police officers in the line of duty of late. We care very deeply about our Ashland officers and fortunately, none of that has happened here. But I'd like us to begin with a moment of silence simply to remember those who have given their lives in the line of duty. And for those of you who are inclined to pray, perhaps a silent prayer that somehow we can figure out how to stop this in this country before it gets any worse. The purpose of this work session is to continue our discussions of proposals, plans, and possibilities for the Ashland Theater. As you recall, last week, we heard from Representative from the Ashland Main Street Association, we got their perspectives, we heard their questions, we had what I think was a very healthy dialogue. This evening, we are to continue that dialogue. And again, this is a council work session, if not a public comment session. There will be two separate sessions coming up in the coming weeks, one on the sixteenth and one, I believe, on the twenty-second.
Yes, sir.
At seven P.M. in these chambers, which will be work sessions for the purpose of taking public comment. So for this evening, the conversation takes place up here. I also pass on a comment I heard after the last work session, and this is a reminder for the folks sitting around the front table. The microphones are on and they're probably perfectly adequate to record this for the public record. However, because we're not sitting at those microphones, the PA system isn't doing any good for people in the room. So if when you speak, you would speak so that everybody in the room could hear you, that would be helpful for the folks who have taken the time and trouble to come out and participate in this. I'm going to turn this over to the town manager, you need to make the necessary introductions and get us started.
Colonel? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, everyone. As the mayor alluded to, we had the first public work session last week where we had folks from the Ashland Main Street Association Economic Development Committee come and sit with council and discuss some of their concerns and observations about the feasibility study, which was submitted back earlier during the summer. The feasibility study was partnership between the Ashland Main Street Association and Waukesha Development. Dave McCormick here this evening is Waukesha Development. So he is a...
I was just saying hello.
Yep. So he's met many times with the Main Street Association Committee in moving forward here. So for the purpose of last meeting, obviously, we had some comments from both folks, and now would be opportunity for council to have the same dialogue with the developer, potential developer. And then the mayor said we'll have two public input sessions, and then the council can begin their process of discussing and debating how they'd like to move forward in the future with the theater. So I turn it back over to the mayor and council for you all to start, or if you'd like, Dave, say if you were up to you all.
I think we'll turn the floor over to Dave to give us his history of this process, his vision for the theater, his sense of what we could do, what we should do, how we should move forward, recognizing and continually referring to the folks in the town. What we have is a feasibility study. We don't have a contract, we don't yet have a plan. We have the skeleton of a proposal for one way to move forward. It's not something that the council has committed to, it's something the council needs. Take this as a baseline for our discussion. So Dave?
Happy to hear from you. Thank you very much. Well, I'm really glad to be here. I'm always glad to, you know, be in a position like this because it helps us generally open the dialogue and talk. And I'm really glad you put it that way in terms of feasibility study, not really a program and plan yet, or nothing's been executed. The theater, for me, I've been involved with this project for almost three years now. It's been that long. I was working on it when A.G. was still on the building and was looking at that point. So the theater, I get, for those of you who know what I do and my background, I do a lot of work in small towns and small towns that have some challenges in one way or the other. Some might have an issue around blight or lack of development, some have challenges in other ways. It's always different, always some different set of circumstances and something we're trying to overcome. So you won't find me doing work really in Richmond or doing what other developers do. I'm always in places where other folks are not. And so a lot of times, I have found myself when RFPs come out, it's weirdly, I'm the only applicant for some of these things sometimes because it's the situation, the circumstances are such that there, it's really hard to see how to make it a buck. But I'm the kind of person who believes that if we do something really cool and we work on it together, do something interesting, the money will follow. And that, I don't just mean that for me, I mean that for everybody. So in this particular situation, we have this theater, and it represents for me a really interesting challenge. That's really what, why I'm involved. It's a, and when I, I'll get into this a little bit later, but when I really look at what other theaters are doing around the region or even the country, a lot of them are struggling, and that's a really big problem. And a lot of them are supported by the town or a nonprofit, and it's a one-way street, money going into the theater, not coming the other way out. So what I wanted to do is apply some of my experiences, not just as a developer, but also as a musician and as a writer. A lot of you may not know, my background's really in writing and music, it's not in development. And figure out a way to approach this thing where it actually did make economic sense, where we didn't create a situation where we had to keep dumping money into it. And that actually is a really difficult thing to do. There's all sorts of other circumstances around that theater that make it a difficult nut to crack, so to speak. The parking is not really ideal. There's a limited amount of seats, the thing is small, the stage is small. It's all set up for movies in an environment where movies don't make economic sense anymore, you know, to show movies. Even though it's fun, and we like to do that. So what I wanted to do is approach this thing in a different way, in a new way, and look at what the assets really were. And by that, I mean the town, the location, the demographics, things that work, things that, a niche that it might be able to fill. And then figure out a way to fill that niche and create a business plan around it and be able to create a financially feasible situation, but get a little more in-depth and talk about an actual plan that could work. So I didn't study, I mean, we looked at what could be, and we certainly looked at everything that we possibly do in the theater, from movies to live music, I talked about that in the feasibility study, but, you know, all sorts of things. And what was really functionally possible, logistically possible there, how much we could expand on the back, could we, it's historic, could we get historic tax credits, and what, all the different grants we could bring to it. And, you know, just kind of worked at it from there, chipping away at the block, so to speak, until we wound up, I wound up with this plan after hearing from everybody. It's been, like I said, three years, so I've done a lot of listening, a lot of listening, a lot of listening. And I've heard a lot of really good ideas and a lot of ideas that may not really work, even though they're good ideas, but economically may not work. And then try to figure out and, you know, and see if we could bring in the adjacent property in and figure out how to improve the concession. And if you know things about theaters, a lot of people think, I paid $20 at the door, you know, that's how the theater makes its money. But that's actually not how a theater makes its money. Theater makes its money by selling beer, you know, and selling food and stuff like that. And the ticket price really goes, rolls back in and might pay for the band to show up or pay the licensing fee back to, you know, NGM or whoever these movie places are that issue these things. So you all who have run the theater certainly understand that. We've always got to pay for a person to clean up after us, no matter what we do in these things. As I know, owning other things like a coffee shop or apartments or businesses that I run, if someone sits down in the seat, little by little, there's a wear and tear on that seat till it finally collapses under somebody, and I have to come back and pay for that. But no one physically ever shows up and says, I'm going to hand you money for the seat. They're just paying for the coffee or the beer or whatever. So the challenge for me was creating a plan and a programming that I felt could bring, could do as much of the stuff that the folks I was hearing from wanted to see, but also have this business model work and create a situation that the town did not keep funding this thing over and over again. So that's, that was really what was the genesis of the, ultimately, the feasibility study. We did, along the way, find that we were eligible for this IRF grant. The town did not receive the grant in the previous year because there's some really specific things that are necessary to be able to get that grant, and one of those things is to have a developer involved. So we, the timing was such that we got this, the feasibility study, or the grant for that feasibility study was so delayed, it actually ran into the application cycle for the IRF loan. So we had that feasibility study sort of do two things for us. It became the basis for the application as well, and it also was our feasibility study. So got a little more in-depth on the business plan side than we typically might do. I've done many feasibility studies for DHCD. This is actually my fourth IRF award, if we actually do get it. The DHCD really likes the things I've done in small towns, so I like to think I've played an integral role in actually getting this town the $500,000 this time around. So it's been a pleasure to be a part of that. It's also really important, and I think they really like our plan. So I want to kind of just, you know, just give you all a sense of kind of how we arrived at this point. I know there's some really strong feelings about what we should and shouldn't do in this theater, and I think, again, really happy that we're talking about it in terms of feasibility and not in terms of actual executed plans, because what we're really trying to do is just figure out how to pay for what it is we want to do in the theater. So we, I don't think we've totally figured that out yet, but I think we, I like to think we, I really do think we have a pretty solid core of a plan in store. And I hope that everyone's been able to read the feasibility study in depth and really see the detail that we're really talking about and not necessarily relying on, you know, maybe what someone said or whatever. But I think that's the long and short of it.
Questions from council? Comments from council?
I don't have questions, but I'm happy to begin the conversation. Dave, thanks for the tons of work that you've put into this, and I do see this as the beginning of the conversation. And so maybe the place to start is with the concern I've heard most expressed in the community and in a way that, or at least some thoughts about a way to work through that. So the concern I hear the most is we're really afraid of losing this as a venue for community events. And if, as you say, the majority of the dollars get made on food, is there some real room to negotiate about community events where the food money certainly goes to the theater, but the community can use it for their own events? Is there a way to work in set number of days per year for community events?
So there is, and one of the things, I think there's maybe a misconception about how, you know, public use of a space translates into concession dollars. It just so happens, I own another theater, okay? You may not know this, but the, in Hopewell, I redid the Maloney High School into apartments, and there's a theater as part of that high school, and I, we fixed it all up as a historic tax credit project. And the community really wanted that theater, and we said absolutely we'll open it up to public use. And it's a different committee, but, and so I don't want to say that, you know, I know here it'd be much more used than it would be there, but what I found that even to get, to give it away for free and just get insurance, you know, just someone say, hey, give me an insurance, that was even hard to pull off. And then ultimately, because again, there's down to this affordability issue. And so I want to, I would say that I don't truly believe ultimately that you will have the same response at the concession as, like if a high school band was playing, as you would if we were having the Gypsy Kings. I mean, just throwing out, you know, there's a certain element of expectation in terms of what customers are going to spend in a venue and things like this, if they're, if it's market-driven versus public or nonprofit. So there's, the questions that I have are kind of twofold around that model, and I'm not opposed to it at all, we just got to figure out how to kind of pay for these things, which is if we're doing a public event, and I'm still maybe being asked to staff a concession, and we, and it's a flop, oh, you know, we don't kind of meet these expectations, how can we kind of, how, we both want these protections. So the question is, how do we mitigate the loss, so to speak? Someone's still got to go in there and clean up, we're still have the lights on, the bulbs burning out, the projector running, the seats wearing down slowly, incrementally, you know, glacially, but to the point where all of a sudden, it happened and you didn't even realize it, well, we need to replace things. There's a depreciation to all of this. That's why the theater's in the state that it's in. It's depreciated over, you know, decades, and now we've got to fix it up again. So I just, I took a little time to really look at how, what was in the envelope of this theater, what the theater of the envelope was made of, and depreciated all these things, and sort of came out with a per-use cost. That's where that $600 number everyone's been throwing around. You know, I don't want to pretend like that's not a lot of money. I mean, you know, for some groups, it certainly, certainly is, but...
It's prohibitive for a lot of parks.
Yeah, and so, you know, the key, though, is that cost is still there. You know, if you're an economist, you say, it doesn't matter, even if no one, if we close the door today and no one ever goes in, it will cost something, things will degrade. So we got to recognize that as a team, not just as a developer. So some way, we've got to account for this thing, and I just, I would say that, I'm sure there's a way to do it, you know, Nora and Charles and I have been sort of talking about that, but I am very open to it. I absolutely want the public to use the space. In no way is that $600 meant to be a wall of some kind that says, that's the cost of entry to my space. That's not what we're doing here. You know, I want to facilitate that as much as possible. And so I would say, without question, we want that, the 50, you know, as much public use we can, some designated amount of time. I don't want to nail it down to days per week or anything like that, but, but it's important that the public does use this space. It would be foolish not to consider that. The, just the only question is, how do we, how do we figure out the dollars to account for the wear and tear and the cleanup and the utilities? And this is the basic cost of the space. It's a very, very simple concept, but a very important one.
I'm suggesting that at least for the fear of broken equipment, et cetera, et cetera, that the town already posts bond for certain events that we could do for public events in that building. It's our building, we could post a bond.
That's a great solution.
All right, that's a starter, but I think that there are other ways to work around it if your group is coming in and you supply cleanup, and that's certainly good cleanup now. I mean, I think that there are ways to package this so that everybody participates and everybody wants.
Yeah.
And arguably, you're not going to have the Gypsy Kings there to have a nice week.
No, I mean, and to touch on that point, you know, I know I've heard complaints like, I'm going to turn this into a music venue. And, you know, the reality is, we want music to be a component of it, and we, I've got to, I really like the idea of branding things, you know, that's really important. And, but if you look at the feasibility study, I really only am proposing music, you know, forty, fifty nights a year, leaving 325 other days, nights to do all sorts of things. So, you know, it's, there's, we have to have every conceivable use that we possibly can use this theater, or we have done a disservice to this entire process. It's just a matter of figuring out how to, you know, just accommodate and sort of put a cost on everything. We don't want to create a sort of a sink for anyone, you know?
Have you ever seen, so we've got this kind of either-or mentality about, it's either a for-profit or it's a nonprofit, foundation-based sort of financial structure. Have you ever seen a hybrid of the two, where there, where some of these long-term depreciation costs and operation for some of the local community events was managed or farmed out to a foundation, but the for-profit side of it still runs? Some way to divide up costs in a way like that?
I haven't. I mean, it may exist. I certainly looked at a lot of models for a lot of things for this, not just theaters, but, you know, I was curious about how the downtown mall operated in Charlottesville. You know, how did that thing get at the end of that downtown mall? You know, how did that all come together? Well, come to find out, I've read the entire lease, it's a huge document, but I was curious. And it was very interesting and a lot of similarities to this. And I can tell you all about it if you want to know, but it involves a developer, you know, leasing a space for a dollar, and the city wanting to do events, paying and then doing, doing its thing in Charlottesville. So, you know, there's a, I think there's a very strong recognition of the costs of these things in Charlottesville, so there, it's very clear in that document who's, you know, how that all works. But they didn't have the benefit of an IRF grant and some of these other things. But I have not seen a model like that. I don't, I'm not saying we can't invent one here, because I'm sure there's, there's unlimited ways to skin the cat, so to speak.
Well, you're describing, you know, just pick a number, it costs $1,000 a day just to own and keep the theater in good repair, just to pick up evenly divisible number, you know? And, and so some, as we've talked about, some public kinds of, say charitable events can cover $1,000 a cost and some can't, you know? And even, even depending on how the ticket sales and concession sales were and all that kind of stuff. So you start to say, is there some way, how would you, how would you, and really, we've got the same problem, if there's not a for-profit component to this, how do you, how do you subsidize or support the ones that can't afford to pay that? Somebody's got to pay for the upkeep of the theater, $1,000 a day, whether it's a for-profit entity or a private entity. And does that wind up coming from the town? Does it wind up coming from some sort of bigger foundation that funds X percent of the theater's costs, you know, or just, or, I'm just curious.
It's an interesting idea. And absolutely, I mean, I'm very open to that. You know, the, we know, we all recognize the money's got to come from somewhere, you know? So recognizing that, if there's a model that works and we can figure out how to fill that bucket, sure, absolutely. You know, the model that most communities take is the nonprofit angle, and they just feed it and feed it and feed it. And there's no wrong or right, that may be the model that works, and that's the only thing I would say at that point, you may not need me to be involved, you know, and that's, I don't have any issue there either. So, you know, I kind of, I'm not sure if I ask 10 people what they thought my role would be, that I would get any one answer, you know? And I think people hear the word developer and it's a little scary, and I personally hate the word too. I always got to look at what else we can, I can call me if it doesn't sound so, you know, ominous. But, but really, I kind of, in this particular case, kind of look at myself as a facilitator of certain things, bringing, giving the DHCD comfort and confidence that they can give us a half a million dollars and it will be well and efficiently spent and get the best bang for a buck. I can, you know, work with a contractor, I understand branding. There's a almost infinite number of elements that go into a project like this. And the DHCD, and I like to think that the city also, or the town of Ashland, you know, has seen what I've done, and that's what I'm doing in this chair. I'm not, it's really a facilitator and organizer of these things to get a good outcome. But if the idea, you know, may be, let's, you know, we'll do a nonprofit thing, we don't need someone to have that, and we're just going to have a volunteer-based thing and get grants and things, you know, I may not have a role here, and that, I have no issue with, a problem with that.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the build-out of the back of the theater? Because I know that one of the things our community groups have talked a lot about is the, as you said, the inability to use the theater for much at this point, except for movies. Even with bands, there's not green room, there's not space. Can we talk a little bit about the possibilities?
Yes, it's like, and this is one of those things where, you know, I've played in a touring band, you kind of see what goes on in the back of the house, and there is no back of the house in this theater. It was purpose-built for movies. And so if you, just logistically, if you're trying to load a band in, or you're trying to bring a theater production in, or have someone, you know, tabling this, what I really, what I really like is, I love what goes on at Ashland Coffee &amp; Tea, and I love the Folk Festival, and I think about, that's why I threw Gypsy Kings, just off the top of my head. I had this really awesome experience a couple of years ago at the Folk Festival where the Throat Singers came through. I don't know if anybody saw the Throat Singers, but that, that like changed me, it was an amazing experience. And I think to myself, if the Folk Festival wasn't happening, where would those guys go? You know, what's the venue that they would show up and go to in Richmond? And I actually can't think of one. That's what I envisioned for the Ashland Theater, one of those 50 music nights of the year. You know, I want to see a transformative, educational, mind-blowing type thing like the Throat Singers from Tuba, when they come down I-95. We should, this, we should invite them here, and this should be that place. To me, that feels really Ashland, you know? It feels really intellectual and quirky and interesting and different. And I like to think that's the brand that this community has, and as I approached this feasibility study, that's really what I was drilling down on. But if, logistically, those Throat Singers show up in a van, you know, that they rented at Hertz, and they come in, you know, how do they load in their funny guitar thing? You know, how do they pull up, where do they, where do they get ready? You know, all these things that have to happen. And you realize that the theater right now isn't really set up for that, but interestingly, it's also not really set up for movies. I mean, if you, if you look at what's going on in 2016 with projection systems, you know, I have a, I did a lot of research on what's going on right now with these 4K Christie projectors and digital systems, and they don't project from 95 feet back from some old projection room. A lot of them move much closer, you want to fill up the screen, you want to do all these things that keep customers wanting to come back. And right now, I know, you know, with, I was at Selma, you know, and saw that, and it was well-attended and really cool experience, but, you know, I also saw the, that picture could be so much better and so much more in the sound and whatnot. So the, the theater is truly obsolete for almost all of these uses, you know, from all sorts of technical aspects. It needs to be upgraded. So in the back, there's not a lot of room, you can't really go back too much, you know, the parking's really limited, but you still have these logistical things around just people getting into the space and loading in. So the real expansion opportunities seem to be on the side. And that's kind of where I started to really focus on the, what we would add, you know, and that really joined well with the adjacent property and how it could kind of go there. And a lot of the mechanicals on the back, and we have a limited fund, so it's not like we can just lift all that stuff out of there and put it somewhere else. So there's a lot of technical aspects to changing this thing to make it work. So I looked, we looked at that over and over and over, and it may seem rather simple what we came up with, but there's a very good reason why that stuff exists in the space that it does.
No opportunity for bulk out in the back?
Well, I just think that the gain is not worth the expense at the end of the day. I mean, certainly, the room is, there is space all the way to the alley, but, but I don't know where else you would go to just do the logistical loading in of things, you know? If you were going to do a theater, if you're going to have a stage production there or something, and you wanted to get everybody ready to go, there's no, there, you, it's, I just think it's better to go to the side than it is to go to the back, because you've got to have just trucks and loading and stuff like that.
Question about the IRF grant. We've heard a number of times from the theater committee, some language in the requirements for the IRF grant, specifically the part that says, "In cases where the local government intends to lease the property to a private for-profit entity, a market rate lease is required." Is that something that, we haven't really heard a good response from anybody about that, because right now, you know... right now, you know, it's not really on the table, but it looks like the IRF grant requires us to have this, um, market rate lease.
Yeah.
Is that something that you've been looking at, or is it something that?
Sure. I mean, I'm, I'm well aware of the, the, um, the, um, you know, that part of the, the language. But I would also ask the question, what, what is market rate in this particular situation? You know, I mean, I, what I think it is, is what I put in that feasibility study. This, um, this building certainly was a gift, or maybe, no question. But it's also, there's a reason ultimately that it became a donation. It's, there's not really a marketable property. You know, no one came to buy it when he was selling it. And it's totally obsolete. Really, from, in economic terms, that building is a liability. It's not really an asset. We're trying to make it an asset. But economically, it's a liability. So the market rate and actually the price, if you transacted it today, is a negative number. I know that's a really weird concept to think about, but that's actually the world that I sort of trade in in these weird communities where, um, you know, Hopewell, you know, bought the building for a dollar, but it was really worth negative 600,000. That's, that's how the economics kind of played out in terms of it. What was its highest and best use? And then you figure out who's going to sort of rent the space or then back into that number. And it actually is negative. That's like a weird concept. But to knock it down costs as much anyway. So you're kind of dealing with these, these weird liabilities. So a dollar rent, based on the economics at the highest and best use here, is even too much to pay, if, if that's, it makes sense, but that is true. So if IRF says market rate, that is market.
Okay. I guess the, the other question that I had about, yeah, IRF grant. Um, I've been hearing that we're looking at something like 10 full-time employees that come about as a result of that. Is that the numbers that we've been talking about? Um, and not to get into any of the granular detail, the five-year projection, just as a number here, has a payroll and payroll tax at $121,000. Uh, I, it seems like that wouldn't really sustain 10 full-time employees.
Well, it's, it includes the restaurant mix. I mean, that's really where, you know, there's, there's, it's, it mixes. Uh, but, um, you have, you know, in a situation like this, you've got people booking shows, you have ticket-taking folks, you've got janitorial folks, you have, um, you know, people who are doing the sound. You know, you know, you have, then you have the restaurateurs. You know, I run a restaurant in Petersburg right now. And, um, I, you know, we talk about all sorts of detail on that, but I employ 11 people at, at that restaurant. You know, we're open, for the times that we're open. I close at 5:00 and we don't open for dinner. And, um, one of the, but I, I will say, not, and I, we can come back to as much as you want, but one of the really cool things that happens in a situation like that, because I know a lot of people talk about rent, you know, they want to, that's something you can really put your hands on. But really, what we're trying to do is generate a meal tax. You know, that's what, that's the, what the incentive gets you ultimately is, is income through the form of meal tax and all the ancillary benefits. So if we do a lot of cool things at the theater and we really drill down on the, on the concession, the town will be the benefit, beneficiary, multi-fold over whatever rent they might have collected. If you start charging a higher rent, it just makes it harder to do business. So my goal is to create something in the restaurant and the theater that generates a meal tax that everybody's really excited about. In Petersburg right now, we do, I pay, uh, um, about $35,000 a year in meal tax out of that little coffee shop. Um, it went so well, we opened a bakery. That went so well, we opened a barbecue thing. So in a place where no one thought really a whole lot was possible, uh, we opened three businesses that do $10,000 a day on a weekend. Um, the meal tax from that's a very powerful thing. And I hope that this, I know the, the, the seed of this entire idea is to be an economic catalyst and a, from an economic development standpoint, to spur other things to happen. And I really believe that if that theater does well and the restaurants do well, and things are exciting, if people want to go there, they'll go to other restaurants. They'll go to Iron Horse. They'll go to a new restaurant that springs up next door. Um, there's so many ancillary benefits to doing what you all are doing, that it's a really exciting thing. But to just say, let's, uh, charge a rent or, or worry about, you know, some of those things. If we do this right, well, I hope we employ more people than the town.
Dave, appreciate your efforts in all of this and being here this evening. Um, you've obviously worked with the IRF grants before.
Yes.
And just, just for clarity, for my sake, a little bit earlier, you said, "If we get it," referring to the grant, um, in, in your opening remarks there. And on the one hand, I'm hearing, you know, "If we get it," and then I'm hearing that maybe a clock is already ticking, that if you don't take action, we could lose it. What, what's the status of the IRF grant from, from your perspective that, that could help everybody understand where, where we're at on that? You know, is a clock ticking on it? Do we have it? Do we not have it?
I'm going to partially answer this question. I want you guys to take it if you don't mind. But, um, when you get an IRF grant, you, you have about six months from the time of, that your, that award is announced to, to act.
Right, start reading.
We're well beyond that timetable right now. And, um, so by if, that's what I mean. Um, if, if we don't sort of decide, then we'll, we had a time, you know, and you may want to pick it up from there, but, uh...
From June 1st, we had 60 days to sign the contract with DHCD. And they have extended that to June 1st, or September 1st. And if we continue to have this dialogue, this process, and we continue to move forward, they will grant us an exception to continue on a little bit longer.
All right. And by saying move forward, move forward according to the feasibility study?
According to our IRF, um, application.
All right, which is, right, sort of the backbone of it is the feasibility study.
Yes.
Right.
That's right.
Okay. And, and with the, uh, with the restaurant that you were just talking about and that how it's expanded, and, um, I know that there's some concern about not having like a market study. Um, at, at least that's a concern of mine. With another restaurant, you know, you kind of wonder how many restaurants can a particular area sustain? And so I know Chick-fil-A came in here a while back and, uh, I was curious, overall, did we gain in meal tax? Or did they just, you know, pull revenue from a couple of other places? That sort of thing. And so, um, what did you do to, I guess, have confidence in opening a restaurant to feel like this is going to work? I mean, did you do any, uh, market studies or, or you just?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm at heart an entrepreneur, no matter what.
Right, right. And if you don't believe in risk, you're not an entrepreneur.
And I have some really deep depth of experience with market studies. And if I believed all the market studies I read, I would just be an employee at Capital One. I wouldn't be doing anything. Because they all, in the places and the things that I do, the market studies say, you, what you are trying to do doesn't exist, don't do it. And I'll give you a couple of examples, just to kind of illustrate my approach on this. Um, when I first started developing in Petersburg, it's a classic situation. It's the armpit of America, right? So, but I, with BB&amp;T, we had to do a market study back in 2007. And basically the, the, I'm sorry, are you from Petersburg?
No, she's the reporter.
You can quote me on that. Because it was. It was a nightmare. And, and I mean, the conventional wisdom was like, do not go get off the exit, you know? And, and so we, we, um, but I took the, the contrarian approach there and said, "We're going to do this and we're going to be successful." And pushed with everything I had to make it work. And Phil laughed at it for a little while, until we leased the first phase completely up. And at that point, minds started to change. And I, and right now, if you go to Petersburg, there are 1,200 apartments in now, market-rate apartments in Petersburg where no one thought even the first one would work. That was a really educational experience for me. And I'm speaking of restaurants, you know, having Open Dalmatian Coffee, that a very similar thing happened. We had, we opened the coffee shop. We did about eight, $600, $800 a day and thought we were, you know, hot stuff and everything was going well. Um, my brother opened the barbecue restaurant and that brought a little more people, a little more excitement to the place. And then we opened the bakery. And as I mentioned, we went from a $600, $800 a day business to a $10,000 a day business. And what was really happening is that it wasn't that now we're stealing from restaurants up the street. It's just that there's actually now things to do. So we, we, you can't, I don't think you can ever have enough density of things going on. And if you really want a great example of that, Asheville, North Carolina, perfect example. You know, how many breweries can a place sustain? Everyone thinks it's one or two. It's like a lot. You know, you go to some of these towns, it's, it's unbelievable. And the more, the merrier. You want to keep generating that excitement and be a destination. And ultimately, we have to elevate in a big way and become really, do something super exciting here and not just restaurant laurels and not just do the thing that conventional wisdom says to do. So I, I'm going to say this out loud and you can quote me on this, but I hate market studies because they always just tell you what you already know. And I don't know if any market study is going to tell us that a theater is a really a great idea to go and run a business. They're all suck and win. They're all doing terrible. They all just get funded by public, uh, by the public into these nonprofits. And I, I went to all sorts of theaters and looked at their business model and that's it. It's lose money and then keep funding, you know? So, so I really, my approach here is try to be a little different and a little unusual and a little experience-driven. And, and, um, you know, I don't, I didn't really want to, to, uh, to go through that process ultimately, just to hear what we kind of already knew, that this was going to be really hard. Uh, so, um, it's just like we talked, you, you mentioned earlier, this quasi nonprofit, I mean, that's, you know, I don't know who would tell us that. It just doesn't, you know? So we got to kind of figure it out ourselves. So, so, um, my, my position was more about the market really is Ashland. You know, what does Ashland really want to see? And that's all, I mentioned all the listening I did. We spent years, you know, listening. And then thinking about, being entrepreneurial, thinking about the niche and what the niche could fill, and thinking about it from a business standpoint. So when I talk about The Throat Singers, I'm not, I'm dead serious. Like, that is the act that we want to have here because it will be so different. It will be that draw. And ultimately, I think people will come to see that and go to our restaurants and, and experience Ashland in a, in a, in a new way. Uh, and I hope that that then would spur other, other things. So that, that's my approach, you know. It's maybe a little unconventional, but that's kind of how I've, I've done everything that I've done. And, um, uh, I like to think we've been really successful at it.
As far as numbers then, um, if, if you were to look at it and say that the majority, the, the base of support that you would see to make this successful is 10% of it Ashland and 90% coming from somewhere else? Because you said it'd be a destination. How far away do you anticipate? Or how many people need to come in besides what's already here? I'm, I'm just getting an idea.
Sure.
Beyond what we see as a community theater. Uh, I'm not saying it wouldn't be. I'm just saying, how many people beyond this community would it take to make this community theater work?
Well, I, I would tell you, I want to draw from as far away as possible. And I know as someone who goes to these types of things, I'll drive to, um, it's escaping me now, but like Iota in Arlington or go up to, um, the other one, I can't think of the theater. I'll drive all the way to DC to see something because it doesn't exist down there, you know? I want folks from Richmond to come up and see what we're doing up here. Not just music stuff. If we have a lecture, I went to, I go to lectures at U of R and they're so interesting and intellectual. Where, why aren't we, why shouldn't we do that? You know, what, what's, what's it about U of R besides, besides the fact that they can pay, you know, somebody? Why, why can't we do that here? I think of TED Talks, you know, and the things they do in these TED Talks. They're so inspirational and amazing. Let's do a program. Let's program our own thing. I, when I think about movies, you know, I know that, I, I see the, the movies that have been shown here, but I also think about programming a movie, a movie experience to be different from Virginia Center Commons or some of these other places that are out there. There's so many things we could do. You know, someone brought up children's events or children's, yes, absolutely, yes. What does that look like? I don't know yet. We got to figure that out. But, um, uh, so I want to draw from as far away as we can. I don't, I don't want to just draw from Ashland. I don't think that's enough.
What, how, how many? Uh, as far as I was saying, if you go to guess a percentage, how many people need to come from somewhere else here to make it work?
Oh.
I mean, the community itself can't do it, is what I'm hearing from you.
I think that, that's true.
So you need 90% of the population base that would come in and, and support this or from outside this community?
I don't know if it's that much. I mean, I think about the people in Mechanicsville, you know, where I was kind of joking about the ideal demographic, you know?
Right.
And it's like, you know, I'm 46 years old and I, I always joke, or not joke, I'm like, "One day I'm going to move back to the fan." But I'm not. I got three kids. That's not happening. But I still feel young. I still want to go see interesting things. I still want to, you know, be in the mix, so to speak. And Ashland is perfect for that. Ashland Theater is perfect for that. That still lets me do my thing. I don't have to go downtown and deal with all that, you know, and can, uh, can, you know, uh, see the things I want to see and have those intellectual experiences I want to see, have my kids do fun stuff. It can sort of be all these different things. Um, so I don't really think it's like, when I think of like, you know, this percent, you're talking about how far people are coming from. I mean, the, the area is pretty wide around it. And I think it goes all the way to Richmond and, and to the East End and, uh, up north into Doswell and all that stuff. It just captures that, the area over to, you know, of course Glen Island and everything. Not just Ashland, but, uh, but I don't know the, I don't know that I have an exact number or percent for you.
Sorry, there was words coming out of here, but not now. Um, you know, one of the things about Ashland that makes us very different than Peterbrook is that we are, we are, Mayberry, we are a community where people are intensely involved with what's going on all the time. And so one of the things that was clearly pointed out to me that, that seems a problem with this process is that not everybody feels that they've had a seat at the table. And so when you talk about gathering information and talking to people and gathering information and talking to people, can you talk a little bit about how that happened? And maybe your goals for, for hearing from a few more members of the community as we go forward?
Sure. Well, I can tell you, I've never had more meetings about project than I have this one. It's like tenfold. Um, we, there's Economic Development Committee, there's Main Street, there's theater. I've met all of you independently in a group. I've met, um, uh, you know, with, with Nora and Charles many times, with Tom, you know. It's, uh, it was an endless, or, you know, series of meetings. So, um, I would really question anybody that said they did not have the opportunity. I mean, I took phone calls from people. My, you know, I'm wide open, you know? People were, uh, were calling me. And, uh, in fact, I talked to somebody tonight. And, uh, and so there's been every opportunity to, for me to hear.
But there still, there still is that.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still that.
Yeah, yes, like, like George, I mean, we're not, nothing's in stone yet. I mean, we've still got some things to work through. Um, and I do want everyone to feel comfortable. It does sort of, um, it, it does confuse me like to hear that someone feels like they didn't have an opportunity to tell me something, you know? And, and, but I also want to say that there's a difference between having heard somebody say something and me taking a different position than not hearing them. Just because we heard doesn't mean it has to happen, you know? There's, there's a, there's a real, um, that's an important thing. And, you know, there again, that's my role is, I could talk to person A and they're solidly determined and they are right and this is what's got to happen. And then I'll talk to person B and it's totally different. So who do you, if you're in my position, kind of organizing these thoughts and trying to get a plan, who, who's the more important, important person? There isn't any more important. And I'm not in the more important person either. So what I'm trying to do is sort of distill all this information and really go find that thing that works the most. And, and so this, this feasibility study and this plan is a distillation of those ideas. Um, I don't think any one person's going to see themselves in it, including me. But it's, um, but I, it's been, uh, it, that, it's been a really long process of hearing and listening and talking and more than I've ever been through, so.
You, uh, you're talking about your vision moving forward here. And there's a lot of different pieces to it and a lot of success in the vision that, that you are envisioning. Um, you know, meet more meal taxes, more people walking through the streets, uh, economic development. You know, this is the catalyst that you're talking about. Um, I, I also know that, you know, as a, as a town, we have been of the mindset that if we're going to do what we want to do it right and not just put in a half-hearted effort. And now you're talking about putting in a lot of effort and a lot of energy. Is the budget that we're looking at here sufficient so that you can achieve the vision that you're looking at?
Um, for what I want to do, yes. For what everyone wants to do, no. You need another million dollars. Maybe, you know, there's, and even then, we're, you know, a lot of things we're going to do, we're, we're have to make some compromises, you know? We can't get... We can't get the best of everything. We talk about the sound system alone, I know that that's a big, um, very important issue. And if you price sound stuff, I mean, you can spend the entire million dollars on the sound system. So, the question is, where do you really put the money? And that's another role that I, I believe I'm playing here, saying, what, where, you know, where, where should we really put the money? How much should we spend? Who are the folks in the community gonna sort of help me make those decisions? I actually enjoyed talking to Bill about the sound, you know, he had a real, a very, uh, opinion about the budget I had for the sound and I agree with Bill. You know, I'm a little white, you know, and, but, but I know that too. I'm trying to figure out, you know, when I think about the speakers, you know, are we going with like the really good stuff or are we gonna make a little concession there? Or are we gonna just blow it out and be amazing and not have, uh, not fix the seats up? Because the next person will come and say, oh, you didn't do anything with the seats, these are terrible, I'm not coming to this place. Like, I don't wanna hear, you know, or the next person might say, hey, these are perfect, I can spread out and just do this all the, you know? You hear amazing array of opinions about these things. Um, and they're both totally determined that they're right. Now, so now, here I am, you know, what are we really spending the money on? What's the experience we wanna do? There are going, no matter what we do, even if I leave here and never come back and you guys do your own thing, there will be unhappy people about the outcome. So, um, I think ultimately though, that, like you said, the goal is to do it right. Right doesn't need to be expensive, right just needs to be really well branded and driven and run well. And that's, that's really key. And that brand of this thing, to me, is not just music, it's really just, it's, uh, it should be more about intellect and entertainment and things like that. And then what fills that bucket is, is all sorts of stuff, you know? Discovery and, and all these things. So, um, I don't know if that answers the question.
Well, it does, I, I guess part of the conversation that I was having earlier was obviously for a million dollars, you can't get everything. And so, the question would be, do you get everything but, you know, at 75% of what you want it to be or 50% of what you really want it to be? You know, don't get the really cushy chairs, get the, the pretty good chairs, don't get the amazing Christie 4K projector, get something that, that will get the job done. With the understanding that when your success, you know, when you see success and you wanna reinvest into the property, you're just gonna have to repurchase that item or alternatively, do you go and, and do you do a few things really, really well and, and skimp on the seats? Uh, because now you're not gonna have to buy everything twice, you're gonna have to buy the projector once and you're gonna have to buy the seats once, but you're gonna do it at different times.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, the seats are like a really big question to me, right? Do you get, if you wanna, if you go in there and wholesale replace them, it's 250,000 bucks. If you recover them, maybe it's only a hundred dollars a chair, you know, whatever. Um, you, you have decisions that gotta be made like that. And, and there's people who love those seats, don't touch them, they're sacred, other people are like, get these out of the building. Um, so, um, you know, if you go, people who like a movie, that's, that's one thing I personally, and this is just me talking, right? I don't like the, the movie business because you have these super high maintenance demanding people who gotta be in the throne and then they sneak in their juju bees, you know, and it's like, hey, we're trying to run a business here, you know? And, and so, what we really want is the people who maybe care a little less about that and that care about the experience and wanna spend $30 buying a meal or buying beers and things. Um, I think you're gonna get that money from the things that happen up on the stage, not necessarily from sitting in the chair. So, I'm, I have made a decision, okay, we've got this limited budget, let's spend a little less on the seats, a little more on the sound. The projector, you can get a Christie or you can get a, a Leckie or whatever, it's for a little cheaper. Do they have the same product? If I had to choose right now, I, I might want to go with the Christie, but I don't think anyone's gonna know if I go with the Leckie. But if I go and buy something off the internet that's used from 10 years ago, you will know. So, I wanna make sure you don't know.
Right.
But you don't know, might not, and you're not gonna, you know, wind the stairs up and see, oh my God, he bought a Leck, this is, this is half-assed, you know what I mean? We want, I wanna fool you as much as possible by this amazing experience and you don't really know what I spent. Because you're just having a great time.
Right.
So, ultimately, I'm not just thinking about the projector, but I'm also thinking about how you even buy a ticket. You know, are you going, are we using paper stubs and all this or are we on Square? You know, or is this app, you know, we can build to make things happen? We need to, there's so many aspects to this. I know we get focused on the seats and projector and the, the sound, but my God, there's the, there's the website and just this total brand experience that we've gotta do, those are sort of some soft cost things, but, um, but they're, that's part of the brand. So, we've got to focus on a way to deliver an experience here that's really amazing and ultimately, you don't know what I spent, but you don't really care because it was just that cool. You know, that's the goal here.
Go ahead, George. Let me ask you, if you could, to address what at least in some conversations seemed to me to be either one or two, shall we say, gorillas in the room. I have heard an objection to spending money outside the envelope of the existing theater on the grounds that you could do more within the theater if you spent the money there. And perhaps the larger the two gorillas is, how do we justify the town using public money to buy and build a restaurant which would then be in competition with the other restaurants that are already in town, who bought and built their sites without any town, any subsidy from the public? I'm not saying there's a right or wrong answer for that, but I, I would like to hear you.
Sure. Well, you know, one of the things I touched on earlier is a really important concept and it feels a little counterintuitive, but it's so key and I have lived it. Competition is really good. The more restaurants you have, the better off everybody will do. And people who, the, the knee-jerk reaction is, I don't wanna compete, they won't go to my restaurant, they'll go somewhere else, but in reality, more people come in because you start having a density of, of this thing. And if they're well done, even more people will come in. So, like I said before, I had an $800 a day coffee shop until two more restaurants showed up. Now I have a $3,000 a day coffee shop. That is just like a fundamental tenet of this, this concept, you want more. So, the iron horse and these other restaurants are gonna benefit from this restaurant being there. Um, now, um, the, the other part about, and, and I, I could maybe go on a little bit more about that, but, but the other part about spending money outside the envelope of the building, um, I think that's a misinterpretation. What is the envelope of this building and what is the envelope of this project? If people really, an entrepreneur, a true entrepreneur will really understand what the envelope of this project is, and it is not the four walls of that building. That is a total misconception. The brand is so key and it involves these soft costs and tangible things about how you buy tickets. It's right when you're at your house and you go online, you're in the envelope of the project, you're looking at the website. When you buy a ticket and show up and that person greets you and what they look like or what they're wearing, the whole, that's part of the brand experience, you're still out on the sidewalk. When you drive by, you know, what's the marquee look like? There's so many aspects to this, to this theater that aren't in those four walls. To miss that is to miss what we're even doing in, in this room. This thing is really, uh, that's a really important concept and you can't chintz out on one thing just because you wanted to spend money on the other. It's a total package, it's all or nothing. If you don't understand the, that concept about branding, you really can't think about this in an entrepreneurial way.
My turn? Um, switching channels. In terms of historic tax credits, how does that define the software of the building? Um, I, I understand that historic tax credits tie up changes that you can make in the, the building itself, but do they, do those affect things like seats, like, like lighting fixtures? Do, um, do, do historic tax credits affect what we can do with the sort of softer parts of the building?
So, yeah, this is, um, it, tax credits are like super misunderstood, you know, like, it's really interesting. Um, the, the deal with historic tax credits is, and the, the way that reviewers review a historic adaptive reuse or, uh, rehab on a building is, they just don't want you to recreate history and create a false sense of history. So, if we went in there and did the whole thing up like it was Art Deco from, and did, they might actually, even though the layperson think, oh, that's the most logical thing to do, they might completely reject the plan. What we really wanna do is propose modern upgrades to this historic structure so that the layperson could walk in and, and clearly and obviously know without a historian's background, what was new and what was old. That's really the guidelines. And it may seem illogical, but that's the reality of it. So, we can really almost do, in that regard, anything that we want. It just has to be vetted by the folks on Kensington Avenue at D H R and they need to agree and then, and then we proceed. So, um, there's a lot you can do. It's not really as limiting as, as folks think. And when I look at the seats, for instance, um, you can clearly see that they were moved and we would know this. So, they would probably treat the seats as a very malleable thing because there's been a modification. Um, the, and I'm just stating that as fact, not as like, hey, we're gonna actually change something. But, um, uh, you know, there's other things like when you really look at, um, when you walk in and really look at the, the Mizing wall and you get right up to, you can see that there's a lot of like Home Depot in that wall, you know? There's not, the history is not as cut and dried as you might think. And so, you start making the case like, hey, can we actually move this thing around a little bit because it's clearly not historic? And the answer is almost definitely yes. They might say, just make it super modern, not, I don't mean to say that in a way that it's like.
Aesthetically.
Yeah, I mean, you just make it modern, make it different so that no one will mistake it for history. And that's where we, um, are able to do these projects and actually qualify and get the credits, so.
Certainly, I would ask you to restore the original bathrooms.
Um, yeah, well, that's, that's, you know, I'll tell you, I have a very strong opinion about this and, uh, the, the modern requirements around very basic things like bathrooms and ADA compliance and things are very different than what they were in the 40s. And so, um, you know, that, that is something that needs to be addressed.
One thing that we've heard a few times now, not to be pessimistic, but should everything fail, you know, should, should everything start up, go through for a year and realize that this is really an economically viable path for us to take? And you decide that you wanna walk away, what happens? I like, it's like the skin of the game question. Obviously, you're spending a lot of time and effort on this and that's, that's part of your investment there, but.
So, what happens to me or what happens to the theater?
Yeah, it's almost like, you know, should, should we fail, um, it seems like, not, not even beginning to question your investment into this entire project, but it seems like, uh, you know, it, the way that things are now, you can kind of walk away at any point that you decide and we're kinda stuck here with the theater that failed again.
Well, so, a couple, a couple things. I mean, my goal, you know, if I was proposing like a paintball thing in there or something, I mean, you know, and all of a sudden like, oh my God, it didn't work and I left, you'd really be, you know, up a creek. But what, what I'm really trying to do is create something that, like, just like the coffee shop in Peter's, if I do it right, it doesn't really need me anymore. I'm not saying I'm not involved, I'm deeply involved. But the point is, is that you leave this legacy, no matter what you do, of something that works really well and really efficiently. I can get hit by a boss tomorrow, but if I've done my job right, there's, it can just move on without me. You know, that's a really important concept. The sound's really good, things were thoughtfully done, the brand is great and someone could just pick up the torch and just keep going because it was well executed. That's really my, my role here. Um, you know, the, the programming is right and, and everybody likes it. It doesn't matter if Dave's involved, this is a thing about the community. But I will say, from a business standpoint, if, if this was in a vacuum, you know, get back to the thing about AD, just trying to sell the building, it's not really a marketable product. It's not something that the investors rush in and are competing for and wanna do. There's a reason I think I was the only one who responded to this RFP. It's not really a, you know, a, a, a great investment, you know, for someone like me. What, what we're really trying to do and why I like this is I feel like if we do something really cool, the money will follow, but it presents a really unique opportunity. I mean, look at this talk about nonprofit, there's no sane entrepreneur that would go, oh yeah, let's just do a bunch of nonprofits. It doesn't really make any sense. So, so, we're, we're trying to sort of solve this thing together. The skin in the game, I mean, it's the same thing, you know, uh, for, for all of us. I mean, it's really, we're, we're, I mean, keep in mind, I have no collateral in this either, you know? So, I'm not buying, I don't own anything, I have nothing to, to leverage. Um, we're just, we're leveraging other assets in this, in this regard, you know? I'm leveraging my, um, experience and my, the relationship I have with D H C D. If I could walk away from this project, I may never get another, do business with D H C D again, I can't risk that, you know? So, there's a lot on the line and it's not, you know, cash is the least of it. So, I, I don't have a, a leverageable asset, I own nothing, you know? I'm just trying to aggregate all the other things we do have to create, a legacy project here that even if I am gone, will still be sustainable and be something that everyone enjoys.
Okay, so, to kind of paraphrase what you're saying is, um, you wouldn't have, you haven't bought the building, you haven't, you haven't put down a bunch of, of capital to make this happen, but by the same token, uh, after 10 years of execution, you don't have a capital asset still at the end of that.
Right.
That's right.
The town does.
That's right.
Okay.
One more?
An improved capital asset.
That's right.
See, let me get this, um, outside of you for, for just a second, but, but certainly with your background in historic tax credits.
A little louder, please. A little louder, so we can hear.
One of the things that concerns me about a project like this is that ultimately, it runs on political and, and citizen will. And 10 years from now, there's a council here that doesn't care about this project and isn't particularly interested in investing and thinks that that would be a great building for Condor's. What is the best thing we can do now to protect that building against those kinds of hazards in the long term? Do historic tax credits help us do that? I'm really concerned about the future of the building.
Sure, well, there's a sunset to, to even a federal credit, which is, um, which is five years. I R F is a 10-year window, so we've gotta do this for 10 years or there's, you know, we run afoul. It's not to say you can't, there would be a clawback.
Right.
But, um, but zoning is really, you know, the, the ultimate protection here, you know? Some, some ordinance that says you can only do this in this space, um, that's, there may be another, you know, way to, to get at that. But, uh, but it seems to me like, um, you know, unless there's a change in zoning, and I mean, the council could certainly do that too.
That's right.
So, you know, um, I don't know if I know the answer to that, but it won't, it wouldn't, it would be really through contractual agreements, um, and, um, you know, but it would not be through the tax credit program or something like that.
Are there questions or comments?
I guess, uh, James can go back to high school and say, he stole my question.
Sorry.
But, um, an entrepreneur has, I guess, a different vision on things and, um, and maybe that's why I'm not a wealthy man. But my concern is that right now, we do have a property that, as you say, you know, was gifted to the town, very much appreciate that. There's opportunity there, but as you say, it's more liability than asset at this point. And so, I have a concern that right now, we have a theater that we're wanting to breathe life into. If we add a restaurant to it, then I'm concerned, now we have a theater and a restaurant we have to breathe life into and someone else comes along and says, if you had a car wash, that'll make the restaurant work and that'll make it, okay, now we got, and so, I'm wondering whether or not, you know, someone will look at this and say, okay, you got a white elephant and now it's got cousins that are moving in. And so, it gets harder and harder to try to find a plan that makes this thing float. Now, I know, I'm talking to an entrepreneur. And so, with a, with a, I guess, a thought like that, then you'd say you're doomed from the beginning, um, by not having that, that optimism, but I know that this is based on more than just optimism. But I guess that's, that's the hard thing for me at this point with this is to feel more confident. I know you used the word risk at least twice, if not more than that, in the feasibility study and I respected the fact that it was in there because I was looking for it and if, you don't have to have that word to read that it's in there. But I don't know about the level But I don't know about the level of risk. And I'll just say one other thing that's probably more philosophical than anything else. It used to be in residential construction. And there's some owners that, when you talk to them, you could get a feel for the situation. Just the way they had their questions, whether or not they really looked like they knew what they wanted and all of that. And so you walk away, and you're thinking to yourself, run away, run away. You don't wanna do business. And I know you talked earlier about how many meetings you've had, and this is far beyond what you've experienced so far. Do you, I guess at this point, already feel like there's a certain degree, the risk is higher just on the basis of the structure that you've been dealing with so far? You know what I'm saying? The structure that you've been working with, whether it's the town, Main Street, different committees, all of that, do you feel like the structure is already heavy enough to make working this out successfully more difficult?
Well, you know, the public process is always like a really challenging, you know, and really can be difficult. I've been in, I did a project in Cape Charles where, you know, everyone was super-excited, and then these five people got together and sued us all the way to the Supreme Court. And we won. The project's done. It is gorgeous, and halfway leased. We just opened it two weeks ago. And I'm like really proud of it because, and even some of the people who are against it came in and said, you know, I didn't, I just didn't know it was gonna be like this. But I knew, you know, we try to do some really great things in really challenging situations. And, you know, this is all part of it. So I think, you know, even though there's been disagreements and things, I still have really actually enjoyed this a lot because we're really in a situation with a lot of intellect, you know, and a lot of good ideas. So, but also think, you know, I think about risk. You know, the riskier thing to do is to say, you know what? Don't think I'm trying to sell my idea, but is to do nothing and let conventional wisdom sort of take us forward. Because that's the best way to keep the theater dark and unattended. And really, the thing to do is kind of rise to a challenge here and do something unique and take a chance. It's, in my mind, risk is never what you, how it's defined conventionally, you know? I think about like, when the bank tries to sell you on a 15-year mortgage, you know? And you think, oh, I'm gonna pay off my loan faster, and this is so great. But really, what they're doing is just shoving all the risk on you. You're paying more faster and getting them out of the deal quicker. It's hard to process that, but that's just the fact. So I kind of think of risk a little differently. Risk is about doing all this homework upfront and then getting a great team together and then charging forward. And it should work sort of with or without me in that way. I don't think of risk more in this sort of monetary terms, like, let's do this thing and go out on a limb. If we're doing that, that's just dumb, you know? So, and at the end of the day, though, there's a lot of weight on this, and a lot of people weighing in, a lot of people with opinions, very strong opinions. And I do want this to be supported and really well-attended, and supported by as many people as possible. I do think there's gonna be some unhappy folks, whether or without me in this thing. But if you really wanna viable plan forward, there's always gonna be unhappy folks if you want it to work successfully, monetarily successfully, you know, economically, and from a brand standpoint. Because it's, but it's a lot easier to kind of just not, you know, do nothing, you know? Or it is. Everybody sort of feels happier, but not, you know?
As far as trying to get my head around different models that you can look at and kind of compare, I think some of the conversation long ago was sort of a cinema draft house kind of thing, with CineBistro over, I think, Stony Point, that sort of thing. Did, are you familiar with all those? Would you say that that model is more or less successful, or less, or?
Well, there's two things about that. The ones that I've looked into actually are not, they're cool to go into, but I actually found out they're not doing that well, which is kind of scary.
That's been my impression.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, just very practically, we have a sloped floor, and to change that and to try to get into tiering this thing and doing all that, it's way more of an investment than what makes it.
Yeah, I'm not saying that that's a good way to go. I'm just looking at that as a comparison and thinking, what I've heard, they're not doing that well. Is this sort of in that vein by adding the restaurant component to it? Are we moving into a vein that's not working that well?
Oh, and about that, so I wouldn't do this project without it. And it's a really, you know, you mentioned car wash. I know you're being facetious, but there's a really very important thing about selling beer to people who wanna come to this thing, or selling concession. And in this theater, you have this really challenging situation where the concession area is really shallow. So if you get people walking in into that space, they're gonna logjam right there. And that's why you all have the concession on the side. But either way, it's short, and you can't really service everybody. So my goal here was to try to create income in a couple different ways, and also benefit to the town in a couple different ways. If we could spread the concession out two different ways and funnel folks out, and they could actually spend $30 on food and beer, or whatever you do, plus go to the show, it would give the customers better experience. It would create another income stream for the actual theater complex. From a branding standpoint, it'd be strong, and then that thing could actually operate when even the theater was dark. So they're very closely related. But I think if you don't do it, it's even riskier because you now have a theater that is supposed to just sit there and support itself and have this limited ability to exploit the concession in the best sense of the word. And you're trying to drive the business solely from that. So I thought long and hard about this restaurant concept, and I think it's critical to the success of that theater. And I wouldn't do it without it.
Well, you took him a follow-up question. Thank you.
I would love to do it in the sisters' space next door, but that wasn't an option.
Any questions or the comments? Dave, thank you very much for taking the time. Yet one more meeting on this project. I think one of the things that we're all aware of is that the amount of time it takes to get a project like this going is because the people of this town are interested and involved. It's not just something that's gonna coast along on its own inertia. So the fact that people are engaging in those conversations, I take as a positive sign of the long-term success of this project. I will remind folks of both watching us on remote, who may pick this up on the website when the minutes get posted, and those of you in the room, we will have two work sessions designed specifically for public input. I know you patiently sat through these and taken careful notes. We have two sessions set for public input, one on the 16th, one on the 22nd. Both of those will kick off at 7:00 in these chambers, and we will continue the conversation, and we'll try to move this thing forward. Thank you all for coming out, and again, thank you, Dave, for your candor and willingness to put up with the center of the universe asking lots of questions.
Well, I really appreciate the opportunity, and I really do enjoy this process, so I'm happy to do it.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.